Well, there's a lot that we don't know. Let's see if we can figure out some things that we do know.
All right, why don't we call the meeting to order? We actually have two meetings tonight. We'll begin with our special budget meeting that has been calendared for this time. And when we finish this, then we'll go back to finish the items from the meeting on Tuesday night. So, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for the special budget meeting?
So moved.
All in favor? Okay, so we're at item A3, and this is the approval of the first interim financial report.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. We've got a few public speakers, so I'm going to call them up. We'll start with, I'm sorry if I butcher your name, Camp Thong Rivong? Oh, the first two. And that's Sir Viliva Ketavong as well. Okay, so Sam Lee Mott, Faith Sorinton, and Adam Monbamo. Okay, sorry. Are any of you here, and do you wish to speak? Okay, please go ahead.
Good evening, dear leader. I am Sam Lee Mott. I live in Santee, 1003 Foley Canyon Court, Santee. I am here speaking from my heart as a mother, working mother of two boys, 11 and 13. I'm also a community leader, a president of Laug Parent Teacher Association. Also, I am also a character building committee member for Santee School District. I'm here to speak to you for our children who cannot be here to speak themselves, or they don't even know what's going on right now, to speak in regard their well-being. I think, I really love the mission statement, but for me, I'm at the beginning where elementary school is the critical foundation where the kid will have experience with education. We all know education, how important it is. So for the children in this community, they don't have choice to pick where they born, what school they can go, parents and environment. The only thing they have, they don't have much material, as you can understand. The only thing they have is in their mind. So for them to continue to even go to college, or think to even go to high school, they need to have success in elementary school. For elementary school, the children, they are really, at this stage, they are really trying hard to fit in, trying hard to learn. Their outside environment, parents, community, friends, peer pressure, the media, they all negative, have strong negative message to make them stray. Now, the school counselor will be the people that really help them to realize their God-given gift and talent, because other people will have negative feedback, but the counselor know in their heart that the student do have God-gift and talents, and they need to have self-esteem, high self-esteem, and then strong will. But right now, they may not know that they have the capability to change their world, because they don't want to know any better. But I am here, I back you for our children, for our community, for the family that keep the school counseling program. Thank you.
Thank you. Faith Sorinton?
Good evening. My name is Faith Sorinton, and my address is on file. As a mother of two elementary school students, I constantly think about how their school experience in the seven years before college can be maximized. It is very important to me, as to other parents, that my children will be able to attend a quality college or university. That is why I am grateful for the school counselor at my children's school. Our school counselor helps our teacher to identify possible challenges and opportunities that might impact their ability to learn in the classroom. I am also a fourth grade teacher in the San Diego Unified School District. Every day, I see students who are struggling, many in danger of falling through the cracks, dropping out of school, and engaging in risky behavior. At the school where I work, our school counselor is always there to do important work with these kids that their teachers cannot perform. Every year, I see lives saved and kids put back on track because of the school counselors at my school. Our children's future depends on their school counselors helping them to maximize their potential. I would just like to add, and it wasn't in my speech, and I just had to put it in there, that it was a school counselor who guided me to become a teacher when I was 14, and I was at Lincoln Elementary, Lincoln High School. This was important to me at the time, because, well, my parents didn't speak English. And so, with the guidance of the counselor, I was able to understand that if I became a teacher, I could make $30,000 a year. And that was a lot of money back then. So, teachers like me can help, but our expertise is in other areas. Parents and teachers, as well as our students, depend on the well-trained school counselor to help them navigate their academic challenges and achieve success. I have worked with many counselors, and want all of you to understand how they are an integral part of the education team. Last year, the school counselor at my school supported my classroom by working with a group of students to help them control their anger issues. One day, a student shared with me how she used to have anger issues, and she used to hit herself when she would get angry with other students, or just once she would get stressed, become stressed, she would start hitting herself. She went to see Ms. Tom to learn how to cope with these anger issues that she had, and she came back to me and said, "Ms. Sorinton, now I know how to deal with my anger. I know how to stop myself from getting into fights." This is just one of the examples of how school counselors literally save lives. It's important to be, it's important to help our students to be ready to learn, so they can be successful in middle school, high school, and beyond. We need our school counselors. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Monbabo, and my address is on file. I am here today to address a very important matter to the board, a board composed of members who are highly respected and successful. So I ask the board today, when looking back at your journey, your success, who was instrumental in helping you get where you are today? Was it your parents, a family member? Was it a mentor, a role model? Was it a counselor? Some of us are fortunate enough to have many of these people help us get where we are today. However, many are not. As a refugee, like so many others in this district, our parents have low experience in formal education, and cannot always provide us the right guidance in regards to our educational needs. This is why we need our counselors. In addition, we live in poor and tough neighborhoods, where mentors and role models are hard to find. This is another reason why we need our counselors. With this in mind, without the guidance and support of a particular counselor, I don't think I would be here today and speaking in front of the board. My counselor, Ms. DeLeon, from San Diego High School, believed in me, helped me realize my potential, convinced me to go to college, took the time to help me with the entire college application process until I received an acceptance letter. He helped me on the right path. Because of that, I am a better person today. I am grateful and humble to say that I am a person who is now pursuing an MBA degree, a person who is a co-founder of a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving our community, a person dedicated to bring about positive and lasting changes to our community and for our future generations. My story is not unique. My story is just one of the many. In fact, there are many students with all backgrounds, in all neighborhoods, with stories of their own, about how the guidance, care, and support of counselors have had a lasting and positive impact on their lives, and therefore changed their lives for the better. I conclude by asking the board the same question, looking back at your journey, your success, who was instrumental in helping you get where you are today? When you answer this question, also think about how our students, our children, will answer this question in the future as well. Thank you.
Okay, Clara Cho Hayashigawa?
Hi, my name is Clara Cho Hayashigawa, 12560 Peters Lane, San Diego 92129. I have been a school counselor with the district for over 22 years, since 1988. I was fortunate enough to start my career in the San Diego Unified School District, where exemplary school counseling services have been well-established to serve all students, kindergarten through 12th grade. The district's inclusion of school counseling services as an integral part of our educational community resulted in the expansion of valuable early intervention grant program to serve more at-risk students with school adjustment difficulties. At this time, I'd like to take this opportunity to address to Mr. John Deback, who also served the district as a counselor. Even if some of us had to leave the board meeting a little bit early and missed hearing your important comments, thanks to the technology, we were able to actually listen to the audio taping of the meeting. Thank you very much for commenting at the last board meeting that the school counseling should not be abandoned in entirety to balance the budget. Your comment confirmed my belief that school counseling is an example of much-needed resources to serve all students. Your emphasis on kids first will inspire all school counselors to continue to work with our educational family as members of professional learning community. I am hopeful that we overcome this budgetary challenge to carry out the district's mission of helping all students graduate and succeed in the future, and thank you very much.
And Howard Kinsey?
My name is Howard Kinsey, and as the gentleman indicated, my address is on file. Last month, Mr. Stover opened the board meeting with one of, by relating one of ESOP's fables, and with some assistance from Mrs. Nakamura. And so I hope in the same vein that you appreciate my attempt Tuesday night at some chicken soup for the school board. I don't know if anybody got out their hankies when I told the story about my son Roger, but regarding grade adjustment at the Met School, the grade adjustments from 2007 to 2009 at the Met School, there's a big picture that Mr. Elliot Washer and Mildred Phillips at all have failed to grasp. If you think I'm proud of my children, all of them, including my one son that returned the chemistry homework, believing he didn't deserve as much credit as the teacher gave him, if you think I'm proud of my kids because they all graduated with GPAs over 4.0, I am, okay? And if you think I'm proud of the fact that they got accepted to some of the choice UC schools and private universities, and pretty much went exactly where they wanted in terms of college, I am proud of them, you know? I mean, matriculation is sometimes a piece that gets let go. My kids graduated in four years, debt-free. Am I proud? You bet. But the pride and the appreciation that I have for any of that on the upside in terms of grades and GPAs and all that, including the fact, I guess, that GPA helps pull in the Cal grants or the funds, different types of funds, so on and so on, yes, it's all good, but when the integrity piece comes up on the radar screen, come on, it leaves all that grade stuff in the dust, doesn't it? Okay? And so, there's some things that need to happen, but I'd like to shift gears and talk about at-risk students, okay? Because I'm glad my kids did well, but there's a lot of at-risk students, and that's where counselors will be coming to play, helping the kids that need that extra help. There's actually a shrine in my home dedicated to my children's high school counselor, did a wonderful job, okay? I have highest respect for the counselor that dealt with my children. When we think about at-risk students, there's some things that you folks need. You need people to get those kids back into school quickly. I understand that there was 100 or 200 kids brought back in within the last year, I don't remember what the newspaper article said, but it was something between 100 and 200 kids were recovered from truant or dropout status and are back in school. That's awesome. I'm going to take another minute, because two weeks ago, a counselor took another minute. Okay? Thank you.
Now, thank you, Mr. Kinsey.
Okay. And so, when you say we need to get those kids back quickly, yes, but we also need to get them up to grade level quickly, okay? Because it costs four times as much to work with at-risk kids, and so they need to back up to speed, so they're not a drain on your overall budget. I know you folks are facing a huge budget issue, but kids need to be recovered. And they also need to have their behavior adjusted.
You need to wrap it up, Mr. Kinsey. We're going to cut this off right now.
I'm going to take that minute, because you gave it to a counselor two weeks ago. Are we cool, counselors? Give me a minute? One? Okay. You also need to have somebody who can quickly get the behavior in line, so that those kids aren't a disruption to the classroom. But when you think about that word "quickly," okay, all this stuff that needs to happen quickly, the federal government says that Title I money needs to be spent quickly. And so, when we see that $3.12 million, 11% of the total of $27 million that this district received last school year, when 11% of that didn't get spent and got ignored or left behind somehow, 11%, $3.12 million that these folks could have put to good use helping with parent intervention, okay, then you can see why the word "quickly" is so important to me tonight. Okay? There's a heroin addict.
All right. The word "quickly" is important to all of us, too. You need to wrap it up.
I want to just close with this. I'll close with this. There's a heroin addict that is dead tonight, and he was an at-risk student, and he's one of the students that didn't get reached. And so, the fact that you rolled the money over for next year, Danny Morelles will not be available to be reached in an at-risk truant status. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the first interim report. Any discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, thank you. Pass this. Okay, we've got item H1. We're going to put that on this agenda, are we? Monthly finance update? It's the monthly finance update? Okay, okay. So put at the top, okay. Well, why don't we move that back down to the next meeting? All right, A4, so public hearing on our categorical flexibility transfers. Mr. Superintendent?
Let me ask our chief financial officer, Mr. Little.
Is there a point of order on that last?
Yes, yes, please.
You know, I voted that we didn't certify, and that's a part of the minutes. You know, we approved the financial report, but we didn't certify to the state that the district's projected financial condition is one of the following. We did not.
Do you want to clarify your motion, Ms. Jackson?
Well, I voted, because I don't believe that was appropriate. I, for nothing, I don't think you, I, our, our policy, so, that's that, okay? But see, there wasn't a motion to actually ask for a specific certification, and I think that's part of the agenda that we do it. And if we didn't do it, then we just approved that line, she made it, and anybody could vote whatever they want on it.
What's the recommendation for our certification?
I believe that the staff recommendation was to approve the first interim report, as well as to offer a positive certification for the first interim. So, I wasn't clear that we took action.
It says, recommendation, approve it, and certify the district will be able to meet its financial obligations, and it does not say a positive certification in the staff recommendation.
I move that we approve a positive certification, as we have approved the first interim report.
Got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, back to item A4.
That is the categorical flexibility, and I want to ask if Mr. Little will make a comment on that. This is the transfers and authorizations.
Yes, tonight actually is just a first reading for the board. We need to adopt this resolution at a regularly scheduled board meeting, so we'll bring that back next meeting. So tonight was just to bring this in conjunction with the first interim report, as it relates to the budgets and the transfers therein. So, within the document, we show you which of the programs are, continue to be supported, and which of the general purpose programs are being supported from Tier 3 flexible funds.
Just as a point of procedure, may I recommend that you make the next board meeting a first reading, since it will be a significantly different body, in asking those new board members to vote. This is a very important element of what we do.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, that's a sensible recommendation. There's no time sensitivity to, okay, well, why don't we do that, then? Thank you, Ms. Nakamura.
Yeah, sure. It's like drinking out of a fire hose up here, okay? As I like.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So why don't we now go back to the adjourned meeting from Tuesday night? Okay, and we will start with item E4. So this is the PE credits.
Oh, yes.
Superintendent?
I'm going to ask Dr. Meyer to keep that one off.
Yes, thank you. On August 3rd, as part of a regular board meeting, a proposal was brought forward and passed, and the resolution stated that marching band and JROTC are an appropriate alternative means for pupils to complete the physical education credit. Our staff at that point was directed to go back and analyze the high school courses and activities, including but not limited to cheer, drill, and color guard. And in this research that we did, we found that the state superintendent of public instruction confirmed that it was the prerogative, and really the responsibility, of the local school districts to determine whether and how the particular course offerings supported or did not support the physical education course of study. And this informational item that you have is before you today to share that there was a newly created document as a result of these discussions. And this newly created document, which is in your packet, looked at the information that was given to you in the former resolution that showed how band and how JROTC met many of the eight criterion in the physical education, and aligned in that way with providing some of those components. And it showed as well that cheer met all of the components, with the exception of aquatics, which is unfortunately missing in many of our programs, and we're working towards that. This documentation was created in consultation with practitioners, certainly teachers, a science teacher was consulted, who's also a cheer advisor, and it showed the different gymnastics and tumbling components and other portions that fit very closely with what cheerleading currently does. The further review is planned. There are new standards that are coming out through PE that are very specific, as we're also looking at the new core standards. And this committee plans to continue to work to align all of our physical education courses, and the direction, as staff would like to recommend, is to move forward with including cheerleading, drill, and color guard into the component, much like currently we have band and JROTC under the same provisions, and to continue to work with physical education, a team that includes our physical education program managers, teachers, community members, and students, to further align physical education. So for this reason, we are including this under the direction of the resolution as other alternative means of meeting PE requirements.
Is there, may I, is there going to be a written document that cheerleaders can point to? I mean, we're not taking an actual vote on this. It makes me a little uncomfortable, and I know that, you know, we...
The direction, as we understood it, for staff to move forward with, to come back, given the guidance that perhaps we will receive tonight, to come back with an item that then could be ratified, that amended the resolution of August 3rd, 2010, to include these other three portions within that.
I believe we could make a motion, and I'm not sure how excited we were, to support the recommendation of staff at this point, so that we can give our clear indication that we're supportive of it. So that's what I would move.
I know.
I'm kind of, yes.
First of all, we need a motion and a second, and then we'll...
I did, yeah, move, as Dr. Evans said, that we'd go ahead and take a vote, you know, to confirm our support for staff action on this. I just want to teach, I want the students who are very concerned about this, and that there be clarity, that they've got a hard-to-copy document of something that they can point to, that there's been a vote and an agreement on this, because...
Got a motion, and that's a second.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got one...
The motion, we approve it as the staff recommends the PE credit for those programs.
But the staff doesn't have a recommendation for us to approve?
That wasn't their recommendation.
That was not the recommendation?
No.
The staff has an informational item currently to bring forward, and the, given the guidance tonight, will conceivably move forward with an item that gives that clear direction, including amending the resolution to include cheer.
Can you bring back a vote? Bring this back for a vote? How quickly?
Oh, how soon? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the first words. We have a, I believe, Cheryl, 72-hour Brown Act notification? Okay.
Well, I guess what was confusing to me is you were looking for direction from the board, and how do we give direction without voting?
And how do we get direction? I mean, I don't have this, I don't have this in my folder. Whatever is staying here that Mr. Deback has, it's not in my binder. It's not in my folder.
It fits on, it was in the...
It was in the attachment.
Last time.
Yeah, please.
All right. There's a couple of things that I'm really concerned about that are not included in this report, not included at all, and I think must be included for us to make a full consideration of it, or the board to make the full consideration of it.
Here it is.
Number one, although there are no child left behind, credits are to be issued by highly qualified teachers. And if there isn't a highly qualified PE teacher giving the credit, then I have a concern in that. That's one. I need that answered, or somebody will. The other part of it is, I'm not very comfortable with the idea that...
That we are extending the credit process to activities outside the school day.
It's not. This would be a sixth-period class.
If it's in a sixth-period class, then it could be supervised as a part of a PE teacher's responsibility among, because there's no class size requirements for PE.
That is correct.
Okay, and the same thing happens with JROTC, then I, then you're going to have the highly qualified teacher possibility. But what you're saying, then, is this recommendation includes the fact that the supervision of the program and the credit issuance resides with the PE teacher, not the...
the program and the credit issuance resides with the PE teacher, not the person in charge of the marching band, not the person in charge of the drill team or cheerleaders.
No, that's not...
Well, that's my point. See, the point is, under No Child Left Behind, the credit's supposed to be issued by a highly qualified teacher. A highly qualified teacher has a credential in the subject they offer, and that's a standard that's set by the federal government, not by us. Now, I want to go to one more piece, which is, I also would have a strong objection, and I hope this board would too, for any kind of a credit issuing process requires that the individual student or that private parties pay the cost of the program. It should be a cost of public education, it should be in the school budget. So that, to say, for example, that all we have to do is create a physical, a program with physical activity in it, include it in sixth period, and then charge people to participate, I think that's totally irresponsible. So, at least the three criteria that I would want to see, if I were voting on it today, would be, is there a highly qualified teacher that is going to issue the credit? Issue the credit, not supervise the activity? Because teachers supervise, support people under them, I did, but I didn't allow them to give credits, okay? That's a normal process in education. You may have assistants that help you with what you do, but you write the credit, you hold those kids to the standards. The second part is, the activity must occur during the school day. It can't be outside the school day, because every time, you could do, you know, anything you want outside the school day. But let's say walking to school is supervised by a PE teacher. You're going to give them credit? I don't think so. It's outside the school day, right? So then we go to the next part, which is, do you have to have special equipment and all that stuff, and is that something that, in order to be in this program, you have to pay for it? Or, somebody else has to pay for it? Because if somebody else has to pay for it, that means anytime you've got money, that you want to pay for a program, then you end up getting credit for that. And it needs to be meet the standards of the school district, whether or not you want to support that addition to the curriculum. That's, we're in charge of the curriculum, not a bunch of people that can pay for programs. You know, and a good example, I just make it up, but let's say ping pong was a sport, competitive sport, and that somebody says, well, I want to pay for ping pong teams, and therefore they get to be in the PE program at the end of the day. Okay, well, no, not unless the school district has budgeted and planned for the ping pong program. So, the idea that just because there's physical activity meets the requirements of a PE credit troubles me, okay? I don't think that's adequate measure, and I know it was used for decisions we've already made, but I also know that marching band and drill teams are now, in many schools, under the supervision of PE instructors, and the credits are supposed to be given by them. Now, if that's not happening, there's lots of our rules that are not happening, but that means that we're going to hold, with a policy, we're going to hold people responsible for following the rules, or take the consequences of breaking the rules. So, in my opinion, I don't think this fully covers the issue, that there needs to be a highly qualified teacher. If you can explain that, if you explain that it's within the school day, and you can explain that it's no-cost program, and open to anyone who wants to participate, then I think that's a public education activity which I could support. Otherwise, it becomes a special activity, and then you get into touchy grounds about whether or not it's part of our real curriculum. That's me.
And I can respond to the three items.
Well, do it when it comes up for a second reading, because today we're not acting...
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Jackson, yeah.
Yes, is it true that Scripps Ranch and La Jolla already have cheer as a class?
We certainly do currently have schools that have cheer within the day as a class.
How can they have cheer as a class? Was that approved? Did that come through the big binder for approved courses?
It comes under the auspices of the cheer receiving the physical education credit expansion.
We have not approved that. So, my question is, because we just went through a rough patch with a parent standing in front of us in tears because her child now took a class that she thought she was going to get PE credit for, that we did not approve PE credit for, and now this child is in her senior year having a problem trying to get PE. It is inappropriate for schools to add courses pinned before they are approved by this board, because those young ladies that are in cheer now believing they're going to get PE credit may not get PE credit. And that is, that is not appropriate. The problem that I have with this is, I'm talking about equity across the district. All schools do not offer PE, cheerleading at sixth period. All schools do not have a strong PE, a strong cheer program. So, I, we have to be very cautious as we take on more things. It's not, I don't mind changing the system, but we have to make sure that when we change it, we change it in such a way that it provides equity. So, if you, so what you're saying, if you want to be, you know, take cheer as PE, you have to go to La Jolla or Scripps Ranch, because the other areas can't offer it, don't have the people to teach it, or whatever, then that has to be vetted out before the board approves it. But the big issue here for me, the problem I have, is that schools should not be offering courses, and kids should not be enrolled in courses that have not been approved by this board.
And if I could, when we went to begin this process with August 3rd, 2010, our legal guidance shared that it really was not necessary to bring forward another approval, due to the fact that the resolution gave guidance to include band, JROTC, cheer, drill, and color guard. And perhaps if, I don't know, Andrea, if you would, could comment on that?
I'd be happy to, thank you. The resolution that was approved on August 3rd, it proved expansion of PE credit as a policy, and directed staff to identify or develop alternative means from obtaining PE credit. That was intended, and we thought understood, that it was an adoption of policy with direction to staff to move forward with implementation. And today's informational item was to report back to you on the progress made in implementing the adopted policy to expand PE credit. What I'm hearing now is perhaps there was not that understanding of all board members that the approval granted assumed that if staff determined that alternative classes were qualified for PE credit, that they would move forward with implementation without another vote. So, I would suggest if the board members feel that a further approval is necessary, a vote on approving particular curriculum expansion could be placed on a later agenda. But the reason that we're here today to report on the progress was based on the prior resolution, which I believe was understood by all, to direct staff to adopt expanded curriculum as deemed appropriate based on their studies.
Just as a point of information on the document you're referring to, I'm going to read a paragraph that's toward the end, but it says, "Whereas the governing board believes it's in the best interest of the district and the students that it serves to continue to analyze high school courses and activities, including but not limited to cheer, drill, team, color guard, and show choir pursuant to education code sections, and with the active improvement involvement of parents, administrators, and pupils to identify additional alternative means." It does not say, they're blanketed into the original motion, so that the argument would be that, yes, it was probably, and it is the intent of the board, or was the intent of the board, that these things be brought forward for approval. So, that's contrary to what I just heard. The assumption wa, it's right in writing here, signed by all of us, is approved, Barrera wasn't here, but it was approved by four of us, and so, you know, unless there's some reason to confirm that this is a phony document, I'm going to have to say that the intent of the act was, or the actions that we took, was to study, not to approve.
And we certainly did take that forward for the recommendation, and our guidance was that this was written in such a way that it said, if necessary, develop additional means for students to earn that credit.
I wouldn't have voted for it if it hadn't been that way, and that was part of the reason why I voted for it, was, yes, we do need to study all the alternatives, including whether or not qualified teacher, whether or not there's a charge for the program, whether or not it occurs during the school day, and a set of criteria would be really appropriate. I don't personally see the criteria in today's exhibit. You know, all I see is comparison to the state law relative to activities on the requirements for physical education credit, but not the actual mechanical decisions that they have to be offered during the school day, that they have to have a highly qualified teacher, and all those things that are part of the constraints that operate, we operate under.
So, Dr. Mar, did you want to actually respond to that?
I did. I wanted to share that in the research, much like we did with band and JROTC. Really, in order to give credit, Mr. DeBeck is absolutely correct, that it must be within the school day. So, that was something that was not explicitly pulled out, either with the resolution or in this case, but it is a given, if it's in the school day. And the second tenet is that it needs to be a highly qualified teacher, and that, once again, is correct. We worked with human resources and looked in, into the research, and it does need to be a highly qualified teacher that is issuing that credit. And then lastly, regarding the school budget, that was certainly also a discussion that came up. The school budget, as was our guidance through legal, is required to pay for this activity, and so, our answer was regardless of after school or within the day, in this case, we are required to pay for that. So, certainly, there would need development of minimum, especially for an expensive activity such as cheerleading. You'd have to define what would be the minimum and the standard, but certainly that was something, all three of those points are correct, and we are certainly obligated to do all three.
Okay, we've got one public speaker, Janet Duffy Brewer.
Oh, gosh, that was quick. I'm going to be as feisty as you are. You're going to do that to me now, okay?
I get feeling like that sometimes. Don't worry about it.
That's how my life goes with a three-year-old and a six-year-old. Anyway, my name is Janet Duffy Brewer. I live at 8690 Lynx Road, San Diego, and near Mesa. I have been a physical education teacher at Marston Middle School for the past 13 years, a very proud employee of this district, and I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the motion that you have at hand to include cheer. And it's not that I have anything against these beautiful, lovely ladies over here, because I'm willing to bet that they're very healthy in muscular endurance, muscular strength, flexibility, body composition, cardio-respiratory endurance, balance, agility, coordination, all the components of fitness, they are passing. But as Mr. DeBeck, my new best friend, said, "Physical activity does not equal physical education," and I have that here in my notes. If it was up to me, I wouldn't allow credit for cheer, band, ROTC, or even the football team, or the basketball team, or the track team, because those things do not necessarily teach to, nor meet the standards. I'm not sure, Ms. Mayor, what eight qualifications you were speaking to, but the papers that I've passed to the board members right now, you'll look on the cover, those are the California Model Content Standards for Physical Education. They were passed in January of 2005. They state what students should be able to know and do in physical education from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. They're on the California Department of Education website, just like the math standards, the language arts standards, all the other standards that tell us what we teach and do. So, besides the highly qualified issue, the other problems I have is that the focus of a class on cheer, the focus of a high school football team, is very narrow. It does not meet the standards in the five areas of cognitive motor skills, demonstration of strategies of motor skills, assessment and maintenance of fitness, knowledge of maintenance and fitness, and social component. It's severely lacking in the majority of those. And so, even if you have a highly qualified teacher that is teaching certain things, they're not going to meet all of those standards as they go through. My students analyze, synthesize, critique, reflect, create, and demonstrate knowledge of PE concepts and health. I teach about biomechanics, physiology, and anatomy. My students create projects that demonstrate their knowledge of exercise physiology, the components of health and fitness, the progression principle, specificity, overload. I can't imagine that the cheer coach, that the football team, is taking the time to break down those things and teach our kids how to be healthy for life. As you know, we're facing a huge epidemic of obesity. Since my generation, obesity has tripled. It is a classic tragic epidemic in our country, and I don't think that these lovely young ladies are going to be doing handsprings when they're 40 and 50 years old. Our football players are not going to be playing tackle football. We are doing them a disservice if we are not teaching them a wide range of physical activities like tennis, and swimming, and dance, and giving them the tools to be their own trainer for life. So, I'm not only asking you not to pass the resolution for cheer, if you can amend the August 3rd thing, then I would ask you to take out cheer, JROTC, and band from all of it, and eventually remove athletics, because, just because they are physically active, they are not physically competent and physically educated. So, please don't do a disservice to our kids.
Thank you.
There's one other thing that I have...
We've got one other public speaker, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, a while...
Thank you. Maureen Santa Maria.
And I'm sure I'll embarrass my daughter. I'm Maureen Santa Maria, I live in San Carlos. I had not planned to speak tonight. I guess I just thought it was common sense, and that the girls would have their PE credit reinstated. They have always had PE credit. It was this little odd law from, or that came down a few years ago, that all of a sudden muddled it. Eight high schools in San Diego kept it because they understood the law. You know, I've got the list of high schools here that have always had PE credit, sixth period. They know how far, you know, how hard the girls work. It's only a few schools that dropped it. Our school, and I believe Mission Bay, dropped it, because they didn't, they were afraid that they'd get visited by the state or something. So, they've all had it. And another thing, and I, oh, did I drop something? No, maybe not. I don't know if you girls know the Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She was a cheerleader.
Say yes.
Do you guys know Ruth Bader? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Supreme Court Justice, cheerleader at James Madison High School, Brooklyn, New York.
That's right.
Then she went on, and, you know, she had quite the career. She was well-known, really made her mark at the Women's Rights Project. She worked on gender equality, and we all know as well, the elephant in the room is that cheer is 99% female. And, you know, I'm old enough where I remember things we've had to go through, you know. I did get to vote, that was good, but there's a lot of other things that have happened, you know, in my lifetime since 1951. And as Ruth Bader Ginsburg said, that women's status, when it's something like this, is inferior to men's status. We have to stop that. We can't go back. It would be like, well, I know you guys got the vote in, what, 1921 or 1919?
1920.
But, you know, we're not so sure anymore. We need a little bit more proof, we need more time. This is the same thing happening. These girls go through four years of school. They're going to be out of there before they can get their PE credit. And, you know, I'm sure this lady is an excellent PE teacher. If anybody has seen PE classes at Patrick Henry, these girls work a lot harder than the PE classes are basically recessed. And I know at Patrick Henry, the lady that runs it, she's a PE teacher, she's excellent, she's been there 30 years. She knows what she's doing. It's got to be timely. These kids are American girls, they go to American high schools, we've got football, basketball, we've got cheerleaders. I think some of you are acting like this is the oddest thing ever. They're cheerleaders for football teams. This is America. This is what, this is it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I'm not convinced by the fact that somebody did something before, because some times before, there were charges made for uniforms as a part of participation, and that was illegal then, and it still is. So, the past doesn't prove the present, that what they did in the past doesn't make a precedent for being right, especially if it was wrong in the past. So, I'm not going to go through that debate. But what bothers me as a former counselor is something even more basic, and that is, any student in this school district is normally required to take PE in the ninth grade, and also in the 10th grade. And when they finish those two years of PE, they're done with the requirements for PE. So, the only people that we would possibly be arguing about on this whole policy issue, including band and all the rest, including varsity athletes, is whether or not they didn't take PE in the ninth and 10th grade. Because if they did, the whole problem's been solved, because they met the state requirements of the two years of physical education, and they participated in an activity that state supported and... they participated in an activity that state-supported, and it follows the guidelines and standards for PE. But then, let's say they decided, no, we're gonna be in cheer, or we're gonna be varsity athletes, but we're not gonna take the sport, we're not gonna take these things in the ninth and 10th grade. Then, they're gambling on a couple of things. One, that they'll make the team, which means if they don't make the team, they gotta take PE anyway. Okay? But they could've already taken care of that already, because as a counselor, I would amend the courses unless they were really violently objection. And I can't remember a case, in fact, we had to implement, at Garfield, when I started up Garfield as a site away from downtown where we were, we had to implement a PE program for all the kids at Garfield. Garfield Downtown has to have a PE program, they do. It's a different kind of activity, but they have a PE program. Okay? They have a basketball court inside the building, and they do exercises, they do a bunch of stuff as a PE credit for that school. Okay? And it's not independent study, it's actual do it, you know? Now, I can't measure, for example, the quality of an education, a program, by the amount of sweat. That's not the measure, the measure is the state standards. Okay? Now, if the content of cheer includes the state standards, then I'd like to have seen it before I ever gave that credit. But I don't think it's there. I think it's retroactively being decided that they meet the standards rather than actually proposed as a course before the school district in the first place. That's true also of band, it's also true of sports. Now, when I was in high school a long, long time ago, I lettered four years in sports, but I still had to take PE. Okay? And I did. So the problem isn't that you can't take the course, there's a way to meet the requirements for the credit anyway. So what's the big argument about? Well, it's only about a few kids who didn't take PE that wanna get credit for something they didn't take, by doing something else. That's the only people that this argument's about in the first place.
Dr. Mark.
Yeah. Ladies, you know, I'm sorry for all the anxiety, this is politics. It's just nothing but pure politics. You know, this is, Ms. Henry is completely correct that this is absolutely, it's just common sense. We've done this for 50 years. There are other school districts all over the state that do this. Most of our schools actually have already given this PE credit. I think the issues of equity are, of course, important, but our kids have already had eight years of physical education by the time they reach the ninth grade. And we're not forcing anyone to take cheer. If they wanna take another course or whatever, that's fine, but it suggests that these are not, you know, these are physically fit students, you know, they're well-educated, they understand what they're doing. But if you take this PE credit away, what it does is essentially destroy the program. As I've shared with you before, for J-R-O-T-C, for band, for PE, and it's certainly been demonstrated at Henry, if you remove PE credit, it just unravels the entire sport. These are team activities, you have to have a critical mass of people in order to actually participate and be competitive and all the rest of that. And in this over-impacted, you know, curriculum that we have today, most of these girls are taking advanced placement courses, they're hoping to go to college, there's a much heavier schedule than there was in 1950. They, you know, doing double duty for this makes perfect sense. It's also, PE is not what it used to be. But you know, can we try and find some way to put this to bed? You know, I mean, I'm just really, I think San Diego is frustrated with it. You know, it seems nonsensical, it needs to be taken care of, and I don't think anybody understands why this is so hard to do. So, you know, this is just...
Well, putting it to bed is not as easy as one would think, and certainly, I have concerns when staff takes the words that we have written here, and I'm just reading back the latest resolution, nowhere does it say that they will implement cheer. It says she were to go, but can analyze and then come back and bring it to us. Then that means that this item, A4, should've had, you know, proposed recommendations and that type of thing. I think if the objective is to bring cheer forward as a credited course here in the district, then it should come back as that. I don't think we should take action, and I think it has to be brought the correct way. I think that is the reason why people get frustrated, is that things don't come in sequential way the way they should. They come bits and pieces, and information here and something else over there. And then, people say, well, why didn't you pass it? Why didn't you just go ahead and do it? Well, we didn't do it because all the information is not there. I think that we do have to look at the state standards. We tend to unify, in the past, it's had a history of trying to go around the state standards. It doesn't benefit our students when that happens, because they get caught in the middle. Our responsibility is to make sure that our students, when they graduate, they don't have anything that's gonna cause them any anxiety. They don't, no one should've skipped ninth grade PE and hoped they'd be made up later on by our board policy. That should not happen, staff should not do that. So I think, yes, this should be brought back as an action item whenever your research is totally done, and that the board at that time decide how they wanna deal with it. But I don't think it's appropriate tonight for us, it's the information item, I'll leave it an information item, I can't support moving it forward without having all the due diligence done.
And I certainly appreciate the feedback. The line in the resolution that was given to us through the legal guidance, I will read, and it says, "It is the intent of the Board of Education that the number of alternative means for students to earn physical education credit will be expanded as a result of the adoption of this resolution, August 3rd." So under that umbrella, we were instructed, but certainly are hearing what you are saying tonight, that you would like to see further information.
Where's it say that?
It's the...
I'm looking at the resolution, and I read the resolution, and I read the portion of it that talked about what we directed staff to do, and I didn't hear what you said.
The second paragraph, second page.
Now, therefore be resolved?
Yes, correct.
Seek alternative means. Fair enough, that means we have to approve it, right?
That's right, that's the whole point.
Okay, so I think it was not the intention of the staff to bring an item for action tonight.
Right.
I guess we've got a motion on the floor.
Well, I mean, I'm willing to table a motion if we have some indication from staff about when, since this has been delayed, about when this can be brought forward, and it doesn't seem like it needs a lot of time to put the information together and come back at a meeting this month, perhaps?
Certainly, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
What day will we do this?
We have a special meeting on the 7th, and we have a regular meeting on the 14th.
Why don't we do the December 14th meeting?
Neither of us will be here, because we'll be off our seats.
Oh, I'll be here.
Well, I'll be here. You won't get the vote. Neither of us will get the vote.
In my heart, I will be radiating a vote.
We can absolutely bring it back.
December 14th. Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks, for showing up tonight. Okay, let's move on.
December 14th.
Can we get a motion to approve items F1 through F6?
Prove minutes, sure, move, so moved.
To approve minutes?
Yes.
Okay, minutes, yes.
Okay. Did we want to pull out F6 specifically?
F3.
Did you wanna not?
F3, it's pretty basic.
Well, we also had to accept, there's two things we did, we're on the old agenda, was accept the results of the vote, the results of the election.
Right.
No, that item was tabled and moved to the 14th. They didn't send us the official results yet.
Okay, well, okay. But, you know, I accept it, that's fine with me.
Do you wanna hold record?
I'm all free, actually. I'm probably gonna live another 20 years as a result of that. And so, okay, well, if we don't have to do it, then let the other guys do it, that's fine with me.
Let's move on to item H1, this is our monthly financial report. Ron, would you come forward to provide the highlight of the...
So, just to clarify, have F1 through F6 all been approved?
Yes.
Well, my understanding is reporting, but F1, but I'm in agreement anyway.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Koba and cabinet members. Tonight is just our monthly update, updating the Board on the status of our current year district's budget. Let me grab the...
How big's the deficit? That's all we need.
You're not gonna get a very serious audience.
No, I guess not, that's okay. We're gonna follow the same template that we have been following for each of these. Remember that this is just a comparison of budgeted versus actuals. We've seen most of this information before, and I'm sure as you read through the first interim presentation for tonight, that you've seen this information before. So, the general fund revenue highlights, the state increase that we're not sure about, the SDA money that we received, the SFSF money that we're anticipating. We also reduced some revenue budgets down, interest primarily in transportation revenues. General fund expenditures, again, these just show what's left unexpended and unencumbered, 211 million total for the general fund. And we referenced the employees that are still sitting in the holding departments. The last conversation I had with our HR director, most of them have now been placed. So we're making progress in that area. On our watch list, it's the same that was on our watch list last month, so this has not changed. As I mentioned, the positions in the holding departments continue to go down, and as they do, that number will drop. We did reference in the first interim report, the unknowns around AB 3632, and that is the state budget adoption that basically pushes the services for mental health from the counties, potentially to school districts. And we're obviously watching that carefully as are many other agencies.
And if I could add here, if we were considering legislative efficacy, this is one that we want certainly factor, because this is a ripple effect across the state, where the county health agencies are forced to simply walk away from funding these services across the board, and particularly for us, it's about our kids of highest need, as it is for all the other districts in the county and across the state.
Have we done at least some initial analysis on what the impact would be?
I think that is something that I've asked Ron and Joe Fulcher to work on. Now, I think that they are doing that, and we are in a little better situation than many of the other districts, because we had already, as our own self, have been kinda tracking that issue. But we're not out of the woods, clearly not as bad as many other districts are, but this is a big issue, I think.
But we have district personnel that are committed, that we have with rights of employment that are contingent on the re-upping of that mental health fund. So what we basically have in a situation is, we have an obligation to employees that is unfunded. But, that's the truth. There's no but in that. But then the question is, does that then become a subtraction from the services we provide in other arenas, if there is an obligation for the people who are doing the mental health services that are our employees? The obvious effect will be to subtract from the general fund and impact the operation as it stands of education.
These are services that we have not offered our students prior to now, because we have not been required to. The county has been providing these services. Moving forward...
But we've been reimbursed for some services through that same fund.
These are services that, well, those are a different set of services. So under some mandated claims, we are reimbursed for certain services, those do not fall under this umbrella.
I thought we voluntarily got some, okay.
No, this is something entirely different that we have not had to provide in the past, that we are now, you know, exposed to providing, and there is some financial risk. But Joe and I are working on that.
I was wondering, Ron, if you would perhaps want Joe to maybe comment on that just very briefly, because this is an evolving, emerging issue. It really had a conversation two weeks ago at the monthly superintendent conference, because it was the first time we get together after the governor vetoed this.
I just wanted to comment on what Mr. DeBeck said, that the concern is not so much about the district employees, it's the fact that we have students who are receiving a high level of services through these programs, and if these programs are no longer funded through the county, we still have the legal obligation to do that, which is millions of dollars.
That's my understanding, but maybe Joe can certainly speak more intelligently to that than I can. But yes, there is the financial exposure of a few million dollars at this point, and we're refining those numbers, and we'll include those in our second interim projections. And there are many lawsuits, of course, as you know, challenging this, so there's a lot of work to be done, as Superintendent Koba said, in Sacramento, to advocate for some change to the existing law now. Did you wanna say something, Joe?
Yeah, we're in the process of doing some preliminary analysis of how this could impact the district and our students. We're in a fairly enviable position, because we have our Mental Health Resource Center that could serve a couple of purposes. They can do some of the assessments that the county has done in the past. We can also serve many of our students in day treatment facilities, which, of course, the county does contract with various districts for. We have our own day treatment facilities here in the district, New Dawn, Marcy, Unified Day. So some of those students could still remain in our district and be served. The big concern is about those kids who, of course, are in residential facilities. We have about 52 of those students in and out of the state in residential facilities, and that could potentially be about three or so million dollars that we're looking at. We have to cover, of course, their room and board, and then potentially the mental health support. Now, there's a lot of confidence that the funding will be restored, but that won't happen, and we won't know, of course, until January.
So this is just a look at the other funds, and again, this is just comparing the budget versus where we are with respect to expenditures and encumbrances. So there's nothing interesting necessarily on this slide, it's all in line with where we expect it to be this time of year. This is what's remaining in the general fund, unexpended and unencumbered, 13% on the unrestricted side, 22% restricted, and 17% remaining unexpended and unencumbered across the general fund.
I'll ask you a question about that. So we're saying money that has not been spent and has not been encumbered, but it's budgeted.
Is that for the fiscal year?
So what would be the examples of that?
This would be what we have left to spend on supplies that have not been purchased yet and not been budgeted.
They've been budgeted, but they haven't been encumbered yet.
Exactly, certain staff that have not been encumbered yet, or vacancies.
So I get, the question is always, how much flexibility do we have in here when it was budgeted but not spent?
And I think the next slides will address that a little bit further. So this is the total general fund, and what I draw the Board's attention to is the bottom right-hand pie chart, so what's remaining. So you'll see that what's remaining right now is sitting mostly in certificated salaries and materials and supplies. And the certificated salaries piece represents mostly the federal jobs bill. So we have not moved any money yet at this time, any salary expense into the $21 million that we receive from the federal government for the jobs bill. So that's obviously part of our first interim work that we did, that the Board just adopted. If you look at the unrestricted, it's an entirely different picture, again, the bottom right-hand pie chart. So here, what's not expended, what's not encumbered, is mostly reserves. So we don't have much flexibility with unrestricted funds in terms of moving money around. This money will certainly be expended by year-end. But on the restricted side, again, there's some flexibility. You can see that we have most of it now sitting in certificated salaries, again, because we're gonna move some of the salaries from the unrestricted into the federal jobs bill, which is restricted. The materials and supplies, I think we have a slide in here, let me just go forward.
Ron, can I just ask?
Sure.
And hopefully this doesn't lead us down a way too technical road, but why wouldn't we encumber reserves?
Reserves are what are left after the expenditures which are encumbered are subtracted from the revenues which are projected. So it's not something you would encumber, it's kinda what's left after you do all the math.
Aren't the reserves by definition unencumbered?
The reserves are what is left after the encumbrances are subtracted from the revenues.
It's after the budgeted material, the reserves become less if you have under-budgeted. If you made a mistake in your budget, then it's gonna impact your reserves. So what you have is, let's say you come out in a deficit spending in that year, then that reserve is gonna be reduced by the amount of your deficit.
I guess maybe my question is, at the beginning of the year, when... I guess maybe my question is, at the beginning of the year, when we pass a budget, we talk about a minimum required reserve.
Correct.
I assume that's encumbered.
That's not encumbered. Maybe what you're referring to is designated and undesigned. So, we have a minimal requirement of two percent, as you know, that we designate in the reserves. And there may be some other things designated in the reserves. You may have some prepaid expenses that are designated as a line item in the reserves.
But they're not encumbered.
But not only that, it's not even real money. Right.
It's not real money, it's just the money that we project we may get.
It's kind of like, if you were balancing your checkbook, the reserves are what you start with, less what you've expended. We only encumber expenses.
The reserves anticipate my wages for the future, because you can't tell me that we've got cash in the bank equal to our reserves, because it's not true. We have reserves, but we have budgeted reserves, not an actual fixed account that's got dollars that they call reserves.
The only time that that's not the case is in September, when we bring before the board unaudited actuals.
That's when your ending balance is finally resolved.
Exactly.
But there's, I guess, again, I apologize, I guess, is there a danger that we would actually start spending our required reserves?
Well, that's a danger every year, and that's where we are, and that's why we're doing the budget work that we're doing. But we would know that we're doing, so anytime you def, just as Mr. DeBeck said, anytime you deficit spend, anytime you spend more than you bring in, it's going to eat into the reserves.
I understand.
And to the extent that you have a large pot of reserves, you can keep expanding, you know, eating into the reserves without affecting the last two percent, which is designated as a reserve for economic uncertainty. And once you get to that point, which we did last year, right, and that's what the conditional certification was all about by the county, is you're eating into that last two percent of your reserves, which we're not by law allowed to do.
And Catherine can certainly remember when we got close to one percent, where we'd spend a lot of time and trouble trying to restore our reserves by fiscal...
Building it back up.
Stuff.
And this might be confusing. All that this slide is showing is, it's just a comparative analysis between what's left unspent and what it's comprised of. So, we're just saying, of all the money that's left, of the ninety-six million dollars that's left that has not been expended or encumbered, fifty-eight percent of that are reserves. So, and but that includes the two percent. That's not all of the reserve for economic uncertainties. And I would just draw your attention here to the point earlier about spending restricted funds on this year's students. We included this slide just to show you that we are on track, and we're working much more diligently this year with respect to working with the schools and spending the Title I money and the EIA money particularly. So, you'll see that on this chart, we have about sixty-five percent of the Title I funds encumbered and/or spent at this point, and about two-thirds of the EI funds expended or encumbered for the current year. So, that's some progress in that direction.
Mr. DeBeck?
Yeah, well, one of the things that's frustrated me for a long time, and it may be because I have some other private accounting background, is that we don't seem to show, I mean, Bill just told me, he said, well, we encumber our salaries for the year in the first place, so therefore salaries are covered, and we just spend them down as you go through the year. You know what I mean? But what we don't show is the proportional monthly percentage of the budget that has been expended. In other words, we don't show a continuing line of, this is how much we have for November's budget in salary, and this is how much in salary we have. But it hasn't been an ongoing, you know, it's not like, we're short, we've overspent twenty million dollars in salaries this month. We never heard that kind of information. We never, we basically get like progress report, here's where the funds are now. But that, by the time you get to today, which is past half a school year almost, then we should say, well, here's the remaining money in our budget for these funds. And here's, and I just did it. You've got seventeen percent left in one fund, and we've got half a year to go. Doesn't look to me like that's going to come out even, unless somebody's already encumbered the money, which is Bill's explanation.
Which is exactly correct. Superintendent Koba's correct.
But see, that doesn't make sense to a...
So, remember that ninety-five percent...
A person who looks at monthly reports.
That's true. That's why public school districts have a very challenging task before them to produce monthly closes and monthly reports.
We can do that stuff. We can do that stuff.
We can certainly do it.
It's just like cost accounting can be done, it's just not something that public accountants seem to like to do.
We're happy if the board would prefer to see some salary comparisons, you know, on a month-to-month basis, we're happy to provide that for them. This is a general, to your point, Mr. DeBeck.
No, I understand, these are just general background numbers.
This is a general...
You can't do anything about them, though, so then there's still no real issue, because all it is is just a status report. It's like saying how much money's in the bank. After you spend it, you can't do anything about it.
This is a status report, right, just to bring to your attention where we are with respect to the budget. The interim reports are the opportunity to really make changes to the budget, which we did earlier.
Ron, having spent or encumbered two-thirds of the Title I money, how does that compare to years past?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but I will get that to you in the next day or two.
Well, I think it's going to be a little bit difficult to define, because last year, when we implemented the budget freeze, they froze all the funding. It wasn't until maybe into January or so, or later in the year, that they unfroze it, but the initial, the initial part of the year, there was a freezing of those funds, which caused...
I think there was a little confusion. We never froze the Title I. When we said we froze the funds, it was the general fund unrestricted, and I think some principals and SIOs interpreted it as freezing the Title I funds. When we discovered that was the case, a note was put out that, no, this was never meant to be the Title I. And I think that confusion led to a large unexpended...
Right, which carried over, which is what a guy was talking about earlier.
But that was in the first year, the carryovers, because we had carryovers year after year after year.
Right, we had to cut the carryovers.
People would say, wait a minute, what's this all about? The kids are gone, but the money came for now.
Exactly. So, I think we've done better in the last few years as far as spending our Title I money in the year in which we encumbered it, we received it. But in the past, we used to carry over huge sums.
And we can provide the board a little analysis of the past few years.
Well, we're almost exactly at the point today in early, early December where we were in April last year, so we're doing much better at spending.
Okay, great.
We covered that. We looked at this. This is the restricted side. So, this is, well, here's exactly sort of what we were talking about. So, here's the restricted dollars, last year's spending versus this year's as a percentage. So, you can see that in October of this year, we spent twenty-four percent of our restricted dollars as opposed to nineteen percent last year this time. So, again, that's some progress. And of course, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lo, I was just going to say, following with what Mr. DeBeck was saying about the different areas, I mean, for example, we see the whole general fund and restricted here, but if we were able to look at certain budgets, and say, for example, transportation, we budgeted thirty-eight million dollars, and based on proportions and so forth, in terms of differences between the different months, this is where we would expect to be on November 30th or whatever date it is. And this is where we are. I mean, is that something that would be possible? I mean, I know there are lots of factors that go into that, but showing that we're doing better than we thought we would be doing, or we're doing more poorly than we thought, and then whatever is the explanation, I mean, there could be a very rational reason.
Sure.
But again, when we're making these cuts and we're being really strict about the budget, it would be helpful to know where we're doing well and where we're not doing well.
We can certainly do that analysis. Our challenge is honing in on which budget you would like to see. You know, we have a lot of departments, which would take most of the night to get through, which we're happy to do. We have a lot of programs.
Maybe what we could do is, if you look at the different departments and you see something that stands out, maybe that needs to come to our attention.
We'll just highlight one or two programs or departments a month. Does that sound...
Right, and then I guess then the other side, if the board had some particular area that they could just ask you about it. But yeah, I'm not saying just start running these big notebooks of figures.
Sure, we'd be happy to. So, next steps, as you know, we will get through this month, and then in January, wait for the new governor to share with us his ideas for closing the state's budget deficit, and see how that impacts schools, and then bring back the board probably some numbers early January with next steps around that as well.
Before, in a past in which I had some handling of district budget money, I felt there was more control than there is now. And for example, if I needed an expenditure, I'd come down and get it signed off before I expended it, and they'd tell me, your balance is, ta-da, and you know, and it looks like you're not going to make it, or you know, you need to do something about it. I have seen in recent years, cases where, if you look very close, you're going to find that expenditures are approved even when a program has gone over budget. In other words, there's no real control of expenditures, it's only after the money's spent that you say, shame on you. It should be that, once you get to your limit of your budget, you're done. That's accountability, and I honestly believe that this kind of accounting lends itself to that kind of stuff. There is no real way that you can hold people accountable so long as they say, yeah, let's just encumber the money. And I understand the legal stuff. If I'm a principal and I call up, send me a bale of hay, somebody's going to send me a bale of hay, they're not going to say, where's the money, because they assume the principal knows enough not to do it. But you know, that could be the case. They're buying the hay because they want it for an archery team, I don't know. But the point is that they may not have the money to do it. But we let it happen.
I think that our fiscal analysts work very closely with the principals and the program managers to make sure that that doesn't happen. So, when there's an expense that comes across that looks like it may not be funded, you know, our analysts work with them and try to move money around from other pots of money they might have to cover those expenses.
I understand that. You've got somebody else's budget if you move it around too much. If it's their own budget, then they have a right to move it around, perhaps.
Their budget, exactly.
But nobody should be able to tap somebody else's budget.
No, no, no one does that.
Well, I think too.
And John, maybe to clarify a little bit more, there were some early flaws, I think, in the PeopleSoft financials that didn't allow for more sophisticated budget checks. I think we have reached a point in time where you just can't obligate funds if there is zero balanced dollars, if that's where I think you were headed. So, those checks are there, and there are also increased checks in our electronic procurement and our P-card. What Ron could do, but for which we didn't want to focus today, is we could actually show you percent of spending to various cost centers and budgets. As he was saying earlier, is how and where do you want to focus on that? What he was trying to show you at the macro level was how the spending was going across general, total funds.
Yes.
Your report is great, thank you. I just had a quick comment, maybe that we could consider. In talking with the principals, and sometimes I don't want to put any principal on the spot, but in listening to them today, last night, and today, one of the concerns is that, this is the budget piece, that they may have money allocated, they go to get a person, and someone upstairs says, well, the money's not there. They have to come in and go through their paperwork and show them, and then they say, oh, yeah, the money is here. Somebody just didn't do, you know, and that takes away their time from their facility. And so, the frustration I heard last night was that it doesn't make sense to us to have budgeted analysts at the Ed Center, that we had to go up there and show them where this money that I'm supposed to have for this person is. I mean, if you say, I had the money in September, and I didn't hire the person that you wanted me to have, obviously the money is there. And because you switch people doesn't mean the money went away. So, the question becomes, and I said, well, we don't hear that from principals, we don't. With the board, we don't hear that. We hear everything is moving along, hunky-dory, you know, that kind of a thing. But is there a way that we can get more input from principals to help make this system better? Okay, is there a way that we can do something to ask them, how can we make the system better, and accept that input from them, and put it to good use? Because they're the end users, and I heard a lot of frustration last night, and I think we had to find a way to...
And one of my goals for the new year is actually to reach out to area superintendents and the principals through their meetings, to have those kind of conversations with principals, see how we can be more user-friendly, more supportive of the work that they do.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And I would go on to say that the principals heard it directly from me, that we're not sweeping any money that hasn't had any prior consultation. So, they should, as a group, have no surprises. If there are individuals that have had a missing line or two, I think they quickly will attack that. But in my talking with some of them in various settings so far this year, they've had a fairly good straightforward dialogue with finance in that regard. But we'll tackle the anomalies.
Thank you, Ron. That was great, great reporting. Okay, let's go to our OE for Democratic Engagement and Stakeholders.
We have Mr. Reinsen that will provide that update.
Move approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I love you.
Second?
Thank you.
All the favors say aye. There you are.
Well, I want to hear it.
Thank you. I never argue when I've already sold the cow. Thank you.
You got three votes.
I, we got, do you really?
Yeah. You, yeah.
Catherine.
You didn't vote yet.
I did too.
Well, I'm happy to answer any questions. I am happy to kind of go through the report, whatever the board would like.
I just have to, I just have to say, I don't know anyone else whose job is done more publicly, or that I have seen perform more superbly. And I've seen a lot of good work in this district, but we see you all the time.
Thank you.
Okay? And we see you do your job all the time.
Thank you.
And we have a lot of input on how you do it. So, it's really a compliment.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Well, I do want to say, Board President and members of the board, I've been here two years. It has been a pleasure to watch the transformation that has gone on with the board through the leadership of each one of you that I've worked with. And Tuesday night, when I was getting ready to give this report, I just listened to the board meeting, and I thought it was a real celebration of Democratic engagement of stakeholders, which is what this OE is about. Because if you think back to Tuesday night, what your board was dealing with, the special education resolution, and that whole community, and how they were engaged, the cluster model, and what this board has done in the last two years with the engagement of communities bottom up in the cluster model, the food stamp project, and what you've done to bring in the community and make the school a center of neighborhoods, the circle of friends, the balanced recruiting resolution, and the Fred Caramazza resolution. Those were just a whole meeting of democratically engaging stakeholders. And what I've tried to do over the last two years in communications and these other things is to make sure that we're using all the technology and all the things that we have at our hands to increase and get information out, to inform, to engage, and empower people to participate. And it's just a pleasure working with all of you, and I'm going to miss Mrs. Nakamura and Mr. DeBeck, and I want to say that you've taught me a lot in the last two years, and it's been a pleasure working with you. But this board inspires me, and I know the superintendent and all of us, to go out and engage the public, and that's what this report is all about.
One question.
Dr. Evans needs to be engaged a little bit.
Yes. No, and I actually apologize, because I didn't have this here, and certainly we can read over materials, and if there are questions, we can, but, and we're doing a very good job, I think, in this area. I would just like to ask you, having worked in this, if you see some area that we need to improve? I mean, you've, that would...
Well, certainly, we need to continue to progress. And one of the items...
Voters already took care of that.
Yeah. One of the items that we're working on that's part of this OE is to provide the public, our staff, information about the complaint process. And we've written it up in here and are giving you data about that. But just in the last month, Andre Donovan, the superintendent, and I have been working to put together a handbook for parents, for the community, and for employees, to really give them the information about that. We'll be putting up a new page on the website before we go on holiday that has all those links and kind of takes what's in this OE and really puts it on the website and makes it more user-friendly. And so, that's an area we need to continue to work on, because we get a lot of questions in a very large, complex district. So, that's something that we're progressing on, we're going to get better at. And certainly, the website, we still have a long ways to go. A year ago, we had thirty schools that did not have websites. Today, there are only seven. A year ago, we only had a couple of schools on the new platform. We now have more than seventy of our schools that have transferred over. So, we've still got a lot of work to do, and technology is constantly changing, the support we get from Mr. Legasse, and the great work that Linda Zence and her staff does in communications to keep moving us forward, because we can't afford to print brochures, we know that, we can't afford to pay for postage, we've got to do this with technology and other ways. So, Mr. Evans, there's a lot that we've still got to do, and we can get better at. And those are just a couple of examples.
And I think one of the things you're talking about, the use of the web, it seems like probably one of the limitations is just the number of people that you have to work on all of this, the limited number of people.
Right.
I mean, because the technology's there, but you have to have the content.
Constant, yeah. But we're making good progress. But we're making good progress.
Thank you.
Would you like to vote?
Oh, no, I don't.
Exercise with that.
That's your elected representative.
Excellent, thanks, thanks for that. Okay, does any board member want to pull any items from the superintendent's consent?
No.
No, move approval.
Move approval.
What were Seela's?
Second.
Quick, there you go.
Do we have a speaker on one of the items?
Oh.
Oh, not yet, okay, okay. All right, so moved in second to approve the entire consent.
Did you, we didn't do Kathy Glosser's resolution.
Yeah, I was in part of the, we did it by consent.
Did we?
Yeah.
All right.
Do you want to speak?
I didn't vote, because I wasn't allowed to pull anything.
Oh, you want to pull something?
Not that I was going to pull anything, the staff, I had five items to pull, and the staff answered.
Because of protest non-vote?
Well, no, but the staff got the answers to those five items for me, so I'm with them.
Oh my gosh, watch, there goes.
I don't think that to you.
Okay, great. So we do have one.
One speaker.
No, we got two. Okay, Marion and Becky Breedlove.
My knees are locked up from sitting in those chairs that long since.
It'll do it to you.
Marion Snell, my address is many, many times on record. I wanted to know if anybody from the board is actually going up to San Francisco, maybe flying up this evening for the annual board conference?
We've got our two new board members.
Oh, you sent the two newbies. Well, could you send them an email for me, please? Because I've brought you an invitation for a very important session that's going to be tomorrow morning at 8:30.
Okay. Maybe.
They don't, they'll be going away most, I'm staying home, so.
Yeah.
And I apologize for not bringing all the items that they're voting on. I appreciate a decent input about.
There is a session titled, "Why Are School Libraries Critical to Student Achievement?" And there will be a school board member, a superintendent, a person from the California Department of Education, a consultant, and a past president of the California School Library Association presenting this panel. And there's also a school librarian who's doctoral thesis, you've got to love that, she studied school libraries' impact on students to answer the question. Learn how school libraries create better readers, lifelong learners, and technologically skilled students, which you're going to need with all that website stuff you're doing. You will also hear about the California Model School Library Standards. Woo, we finally got California library standards through the California Department of Education. They were just recently passed. So please, somebody send the guys an email and say, "Hit this session." Thank you, John. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Marion. Becky Breedlove?
My name is Becky Breedlove, I live at 4621 Louisiana Street, San Diego 92116. It always amazes me the few times that I choose to speak to you up on your podium that I'm as nervous as I am, because after many years in the classroom, I think I would have better composure when speaking to adults about things that I'm passionate about. I'm here this evening, Mrs. Nakamura, to react to your PowerPoint presentation last Tuesday evening. Normally, when I have a beef with a person, I go to that person directly, rather than making my frustration public. But because of your comments and PowerPoint shared at Tuesday's board meeting that helped paint the neighborhood I volunteer in on a regular basis in a negative light, I felt that I needed to also make my reaction part of the public record. I don't doubt that you are.
Which neighborhood is this?
Pardon me?
Which neighborhood, honey? Which neighborhood are you talking about?
The PowerPoint.
No, I know the PowerPoint that I did, but which, because I don't recall.
It was about, in response to equity and recruitment policy?
Yeah, I know, but which neighborhood?
City Heights.
Oh, City Heights.
Didn't call out City Heights specifically. I did call out Elkhorn Boulevard.
You talked about Elkhorn Boulevard again?
I did, and that is true. And I stand by that.
I don't doubt that you're passionate about the safety of our students, both off and on our campus, as I'm sure we all are, and I do accept your data as factual. However, I wondered if you realized when you chose to use that data, how hard it is for us in inner-city schools to make the public aware of the good things happening, and how hard it is to encourage our parents to bring their students back to our home schools. It's very difficult to combat negative perceptions that exist and persist and are perhaps exacerbated by displays such as that PowerPoint. Rather than focusing on the troubling realities on Elkhorn Boulevard, it did occur to me that you might have chosen to talk about the increase in illegal sales of OxyContin that we hear from the police is becoming more problematic in our affluent communities, and the potential for recruiting youth into that sales force. After 30-plus years in education, I'm happy to be retired, and I'm also very passionate about my daily volunteerism at Crawford. I've always felt incredibly intimidated, as I've said, about speaking to those of you up there. But at my age, I'm continuing to face my fears, and I look forward to future times when I can come not to chastise, but to praise, and to also provide you with data and anecdotes from my perspective and daily interventions that show you all the great things that are happening at our school. We had some of the highest growth in API among any schools in this district. Our graduation rates are high, our A through G is going up. We're not where we need to be, we know that, but we're making tremendous gains. So my hope will be to come on a regular basis, become more comfortable, and share those good things with you. Thank you very much. Hey, I did good with the time, didn't I? Thank you.
Wait, 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 I want to talk. Okay, are we adjourned?
We are adjourned. Thank you.